To our regular, uh, city council meeting dated July twenty four, two thousand twenty three. At this time, I'll call the meeting order. Council members, you're all presented with the Plights Agenda via email and via hard copy. This time I'll entertain any motion to run accept the Plights Agenda. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Williams seconded. Any discussion, comments, concerns, if not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Moving on to public hearing is, uh, will be regarding ordinance five ninety eight. This time I will entertain the motion to open our public hearing. So moved. Councilmember seconded. Councilmember Swandler, thank you, Councilmember. Yep. You wanted to give a presentation on that?
I would like to just read the discuss this and then, of course, I'm just asking questions before the hearing.
We will then take a vote on. Go ahead.
So later on in the regular agenda, um, we have the, um, second and final reading ordinance five ninety eight, which, um, has a precursor to the second reading of, of an ordinance. City council is required to hold a public hearing. So the recommendation for tonight is to open a public hearing. Public hearing is that is exactly what it sounds like, an opportunity for the public to speak on a given topic tonight. Public hearing relates ordinance five ninety eight, establishing regulations and policy regarding mobile food units within the city of Losor. And I can still want to take questions now, if councilmembers have any, um, unless they prefer to wait until, um, the regular agenda.
Anybody? This could tell. So.
No, I've got a couple for you tonight. I apologize, I wasn't here two weeks ago. I guess my first question started off with what's the drive to implement this now? First, the beginning of the game.
Sure, that's a fair question. It's simply a matter of, um, timing of when we started to get inquiries from, from outside the city. So, uh, this has been discussed at the city at staff level pre- in previous years. And, um, in May of this year, uh, city staff received requests from an outside food vendor who operates a mobile food unit to come into the city and use public property, um, for their business for a day, actually three different days during summer. And that's for our application and policy on it, which of course we responded that we didn't have an application or what else. That's what began, um, the staff due diligence of, um, working with the city attorney and referencing what other municipalities have done, um, to drive the ordinance that's in front of the council.
Other cities obviously have these multiple area or, or is there anything that stands out in ours that's much different than theirs that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Um, do you feel that it's going to hinder any businesses that currently operate in Losor from getting a license moving forward?
I do not see any.
Um, effectively, what does this ordinance do to protect the city of Losor?
It does a couple of things. One is, um, in the event that, um, broadly from a liability standpoint, um, anytime the city allows a business or an entity to operate on their, on public property, whether it's a right way or it's a public parking lot. And I think it's reasonable to, um, to suggest that at some point in time, a food vendor may want to operate in a public location. Um, the city assumes some liability for granting the ability for that business to operate on public property, public space. And so what it does is it doesn't, it doesn't control the type of food. It doesn't control the food preparation, of course, that's done by the Department of Health and Local, or the jurisdictions, uh, county public accounts for twenty at the county level. Um, but what it does is it, um, it's the, um, the city, the awareness of, um, the businesses licensing and insurance that it has. And the other key thing that it does is much like, um, for peddlers licenses, um, and other business licenses is that, um, it, um, is a response to, um, ensure that the, um, the, ensure the stability of the public trust. So when there's a, a public who comes to town and wants to go door to door selling something, there's an assumption that the city is, as a government, aware of who's there, why they're there, how long they're in town, what they're doing and ensuring that they have the proper licenses. It's appropriate that they're operating within the city and the same is would be true here. And again, it's, um, you know, identical to most other municipalities, um, ordinances where it requires the, um, the operator to submit a copy of their, um, state license, copies of their insurance policies, um, and gives the city awareness because city, whether it's city council member or city hall, is frequently the first recipient of a phone call from a member of the public wondering, what's this new thing coming out in town? And, um, do they have all the appropriate, have they taken all the appropriate steps that they need to, to be able to operate legally within the city?
And then lastly, the last thing I have a question on is the background study. What's the depth of that and what's the purpose behind it?
The intent of that, um, in all the cities that we, um, looked at, their ordinance, if they require some form of background, um, study. And it's effectively to look and ensure that when it comes to this particular business operation, that it wouldn't have any, um, severe violations that might incline the city to not allow them to operate within them. So if someone, for example, had a, um, a just say mail fraud, for example, um, that might not pre- preclude them from operating a food truck necessarily. And the process for that, um, some cities require that you list references. Um, and cities will call other municipalities and request reference checks. Uh, that's not something that we want to do. We just want the ability to, um, do a quick search, um, on the individual operating the business to ensure that, um, there's something in it that would be concerning from a, again, of, of public safety standpoint. I don't anticipate any issues with that.
And these background checks, are they mostly just on the business and so much every, uh, port of that you're doing that they carry with?
It would be any employee that they're, um, that's working the food truck.
Very good. Anybody else?
I have just one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think just a point of clarification, enforcement of this is going to be through citizen complaint. Is that correct?
Primarily so, yes.
Thank you.
Letter D, number five A, um, and I'll just read it to you, Joe. It's not a very big one, but I had a couple of questions about this. Um, call attention to that licenses business by crying out, blowing a horn, ringing a bell, or by any louder unusual noise, or by the use of any amplification device. It doesn't mean that the food truck operator can't say order number five, um, or ring the bell for service, correct? This would be really weird and unusual marketing tactics that we're talking about, right? They're not going to be driving down the middle of Main Street on a blow horn saying, hey, come see us at whatever address from five to seven o'clock tonight. I mean, certainly a food truck owner is going to be able to notify when people when their order is ready, correct?
Correct. Correct. So effectively the language is if there were, uh, something that, um, would be similar to a, um, another noise nuisance that we have right now, right? So, um, yeah, anything that would constitute, um, what I would consider an egregious violation of, um, the public well being, playing profane music, um, to advertise one's business in a public space. I would say we would probably intervene and ask the individual business owner to turn down the music.
But the ice cream, ice cream truck that has the taquay song is going to go with a license.
They still exist.
Well, I mean, I'm sure that is found out there someplace.
So, much like, um, a lot of our ordinances, we don't have the, you know, city does, right? Have the staffing underwear with all to, um, enforce every single aspect of every single ordinance at all times. And so to your point, Councilmember Two Week, it is, we do rely on citizen complaints. And that's whether it's a law nuisance violation or a odor nuisance violation or a loud noise nuisance violation. Probably this afternoon, I heard a pickup truck or two that was probably a violation of noise ordinance because it has glass packs, right? Heading up the hill on Fair Street. If that's somebody that if you were your next door neighbor and they were revving their engine, um, with glass packs every morning at five AM, you might call the police department and the police department would, um, as they do with, with, um, many of our, um, potential ordinance violations, um, attempt to achieve compliance through, uh, voluntary compliance, sure, we can ask nicely.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I think, uh, before Mr. Murray gave us his summary, um, we had a, uh, motion by Councilmember Swandler to, uh, open up tonight's hearing for ordinance five ninety eight. If somebody wants to second it. Seconded by Councilmember Huntington. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hello.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Uh, starting off tonight with Mr. Jimmy. Mr. Pete Schefner, you want to go first? Welcome, Mr. Schefner. Uh, by the way, a couple of ground rules, um, like to keep this short, but I know you're not allowed to talk repeat, so.
Thanks, Mike. My wife probably not to speak. My name's Pete Schefner and I'm a lifelong resident of Losor. Uh, we've been on the CBA program over here for forty-three years and just sold that. And as most of you are aware, we opened Luke's as of January first, a restaurant downtown that was my dad's. And we're trying to, the main purpose is just to give back to the community. It's cost us some money to do it, but it's just the way that we're looking at doing it. The other thing that I'm more talking about tonight is my wife and I put on what's called a music and a meeting. And we put it on last September, it's across the street in the parking lot. We funded ourselves, we pay for everything, we bring in three bands and we bring in four to six food trucks. And my concern with right now is, you know, those food trucks and how it's going to happen. So I've got an agenda, I know it's been updated a little bit, but I just want to go through and point out a few things that I have concerns about. First one is on page one, C one, the license officer, what kind of authority is that person going to have? And more importantly, what's the turnaround time for it? Because, and we know with barbecue business, you know, we will very easily have, you know, somebody cancel out three days before the event, we'll have to go find another food truck, which we will do. Let me say also, first off, I'm not opposed, I think it's a great idea to have a license. I think it's a great idea to have insurance. My concern is we're, we're overreaching things that really don't really need to be overreached. You know, on the food truck business, you know, it's basically Jamie and I putting on events. The, the events of the food trucks that we have are not food trucks from downtown Minneapolis. We've had these people, we've known them for years, they are somebody that's going to be coming back. And we are, you know, we know that, you know, it's not something that's going to be a shot in the dark of downtown Minneapolis where there's a hundred food trucks and you have no idea who they are. So I want to make it clear that I'm all in favor of a licensing and of the insurance. I just kind of concerns on things that are coming up. The licensed officer, absolutely, what's the turnaround time going to be on this? How do we make sure that if we're going to put on an event, we can have everything in order? Uh, on page two, under four, A, seven, the city shall be endorsed against additional insurance on the certificate of insurance. Okay, now that's going to make every food truck that's out there that travels around to any city, now they have to go back to their agent and say, oh, by the way, you got to put Losor as an insurance insured agent on it. Why? If they come in here and they say they have insurance, that's all that we really care about. We don't have to worry about every year, all the time going back to the insurance carrier and going, oh, by the way, you know, now I'm going to go to Bell Plain. Can you quit change mine or did they have the same licensing? Yeah, can you quit change my policy to have that on? I don't see it as, as being any need. Uh, I agree with the insurance liability, the amounts. Absolutely. We want to make sure that the city is protected, residents are protected. If anything would happen in the licensing process, we want to make sure that they're insured. Okay, if you go to the third page, under five, by D, the city of Losor shall conduct background checks on all employees. Okay, I'm sure we can get another response here, but again, knowing this type of business, you're going to wake up Sunday morning and want to have to do a food truck event. You're going to be scrambling to find people. Half these people are going to be kids, you know? How are we going to ensure that if, if you're going to require a food truck or a, uh, background check that the timing of it is that they call in, they give a background check within so many hours? Because they're going to need it or they're not going to be able to come, not only minutes canceled because there's nobody here to, they don't have any workers. So that's a concern. Um, going down further on that same page, D one, at the bottom, no food event. No food unit shall be parked within a hundred feet of a frickin' word, commercial restaurant. I can't put food trucks out in this parking lot over here, it's a hundred feet from my own restaurant. It's our event, it's public, we're bringing the food trucks in, we're making sure that they're licensed. I can't do it. I just, and nobody in downtown the bar, anybody, we cannot allow anybody to have a food truck anywhere on downtown anymore. I don't see why. Doesn't make any difference. Okay, if we keep moving here, same way, Joe, you told me that my event would be, okay, we would be able to handle this all, no problem. It says under the next page, uh, electrical cords and hookups to public utilities are not permitted. We have, we did last year. It's the only way the event can happen is if we have feeling come down from a fire, put a, a thing in so everybody can plug into the city. It's not, you know, there was an exception, I think, put on it for if it was a city sponsored, so giant celebration would be, would be exempt. Ours is, ours is a private event. We're not going to be able to put it up. Why? It's my wife and I trying to give back to the community and put on an event so people can come downtown and have fun. It's all we're trying to do. Uh, I think that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Hey, buddy. Thank you, Pete, for sharing your concerns. Uh, we, uh, we value your concerns and we appreciate your spending time on this.
Again, I, I totally agree that there should be a licensing process. And more to make sure the city is protected with, with the levels of insurance. But to overreach something like this is just, to me, is a little ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schefner. Uh, next, Mr. Jamie Erickson, if you'd like your coach and remember to kind of watch five minutes, I appreciate you taking your time, please.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Sorry. Um, well, I did a lot to say, but Pete pretty much covered a lot of what I was going to talk about, but I agree with him. I think this is an overreach. I'm not here to, I'm here as a citizen, I actually helped heat up in his event off the panel. Um, I was a part of a group that was trying to bring in a roll-in for next year on a Sunday, but worked out. Um, because we don't have anything like that in Losor and there's no roll-ins around this area. Um, I think with this eight page or whatever, how many of a page, um, ordinance is going to scare a lot of, um, food trucks away. I think we had talked about Faribault a little bit, what the city had done to their town when they did that ordinance like this. And, um, I agree with Pete, I think there should be some kind of a, uh, uh, peddler's license or something, but it doesn't need to be eight pages. It could be show us a proof of insurance, um, the state inspection, the electrical inspection. Um, and at the bottom, say, we have rights revoked at any point, that would solve any issues. And if there was issues with the, with the food truck, you guys should let them go immediately if they were getting out of line, uh, with any, any other ordinances. The background check, I just want to reiterate what Pete had said. So John has a food truck, so if his wife gets sick the day of and he has to have somebody else come, how is that person going to be able to work for him, uh, without the background check? And with the threat of a misdemeanor if he doesn't get the background checked? I think that's an overreach. I think the owners of the food truck can do the, the background check if we don't require for the bar to do background checking. And their employees, they, they do that themselves if they want to. Um, we should be a town that's inviting people into town, um, not, um, scaring them away from doing business here. Um, I don't, I try to look at any kind of liability cases about food trucks and towns or settlements, sort of, I didn't find any. Uh, St. Peter, New Prague, Gaylord, Henderson, I believe do not have anything near what this is. Uh, Henderson has ten to thirteen, fifteen food trucks every Tuesday and they have no issues. Um, St. Peter has a lot of multiple festivals, I didn't see any ordinance like this in theirs and they're all successful. Um, again, I was going to bring up the ice cream truck, but he brought it up, so I guess it didn't need to bring that up. But that's still noises coming out of a megaphone. So technically that person you could charge with, uh, misdemeanor if somebody wanted to give them the ticket. And the electrical, uh, Pete was talking about, I want to bring up at the end of the street of Main Street, we put all those electrical hookups on there in case we wanted to have events, I believe, right? At the end, down by the sign. Um, so what are they going to be used for? I don't think they may have been used once since they've been put in. Uh, so anyway, that's pretty much all I had, Pete covered most of everything I wanted to, to cover. But, um, I think it's an overreach, it could be a one-page simple theme and ordinance and be done with it.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Appreciate you sharing your time with us. With that, um, I would entertain the motion to close the public comment at this time. Some will take them, uh, Councilmember Sullivan, Councilmember Huntington seconded on those, on any, uh, other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Uh, anybody opposed, the eyes have it. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items on consent agenda routine have been made available to the city council these two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be, uh, connected in one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the, or citizens' sole request. In which event, they'll be removed from the agenda, considered a normal sequence. At this time, I will ask our city administrator to review these ones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, just a few things on tonight's consent agenda. First, approval of city council minutes from the last meeting, July tenth, twenty twenty-three. Second approved disbursements through today, uh, today's disbursements, there were no purchases over twenty-five thousand dollars. And C, approved payment application number one for the patching portion of the twenty twenty-three street maintenance project. I have D, approved and amended payment application number three for the north tax lane construction project, the airport. And I have E, personal action, the hiring of the public works manager on the departure of the previous public works manager.
Very good, that's quick. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Anything? If not, I will take the open to, uh, pass the consent agenda. Some will, thank you, Councilmember Shiger. Seconded by Councilmember Williams. Any other discussion, comments or terms? If not, all those in favor?
I am.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. You know, at the public comment, um, I don't believe me if anybody is going to address council public comments. And I think it's led to the, um, right into the city administration's court. Want to share that with us, I'm a, so will be represive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as always, if there are questions or comments on any of these items, please feel free, councilmembers, to, uh, ask them to speak up. With the approval of the consent agenda, I would like to welcome Joel Schmidt. Uh, Joel will be joining us as the new public works manager, um, uh, filling the vacancy that Scott Schrader left. Joel will be, uh, confident, he'll be a phenomenal addition to our public services department, um, with experience currently running for the city of St. Peter. Um, I had a meeting, uh, we're going to have to go with these types of assistant city administrator, Tim Pouch. Tim is serving as assistant city administrator right now, um, with the, uh, plan of, um, succeeding Lon Berber when Lon retires at the end of twenty twenty-three. So, Tim, I had a great conversation about some of our mutual goals, uh, for city of Losor and Henderson. And I look forward to working with them in the future. It's great meeting. Uh, we're going with the Giant Days Committee, uh, July thirteenth to discuss plans for the upcoming Giant Day Celebration. Uh, Planning Commission, um, reminder that the survey is out there, uh, the city shared it on the Facebook page, once, maybe twice. It's an online survey for those who have not yet taken it. Um, it's a survey that the Planning Commission puts out in anticipation of the future of the city forum. Uh, two weeks ago, um, there was a, an open house at the library for the Veterans Memorial, so the Veterans Memorial Task Force, um, had an open house down there. And I understand it was very successful, I wasn't able to make it over there for it, but it sounds like it was a great meeting. Uh, last week, I had two meetings with the League Minnesota Cities, one for improving local economies committee and one for the approving fiscal futures, uh, committee. The league take lots of input on what their next legislative priorities will be from a municipal standpoint. Um, cannabis, um, just a quick update, um, I have a meeting next week, uh, district chief invitation today from Losor County. The county wants to meet with, uh, each of the cities to discuss what they, the county board commissioners will be considering when it comes to legalized cannabis. For Saguas first, um, use and growing of marijuana plants, um, will be legal. Possession will be legal up to, um, a certain point. Um, and licensing at state level, uh, and local levels, um, will, uh, begin once the office of cannabis management has been established at the state. So the county would like to meet with the cities to discuss what the cities are planning in terms of ordinances, in terms of zoning, in terms of, um, the number of permits that are allowed for twelve thousand five hundred people within a county. Um, so looking forward to that meeting. Um, I would anticipate, right now we're working on, um, staff level on, um, uh, looking at two different ordinances, um, at a local level. And, um, all cities across the state are working through these. Um, some are working on, uh, a moratorium, um, a six-month moratorium while they wait and see what others are doing. Um, at a minimum, I can see the city council being asked to consider two different ordinances. One that would be a zoning specific ordinance that would, um, clarify where within the city, a light, a retail license for a cannabis dispensary would be allowed. And that will be important because the office of cannabis management, which will issue the licenses, if they get a request for a license, if somebody wants to open up a retail dispensary, they'll look at your business plan, they'll look at their, they'll do a thousand background checks, they'll look at their site plan, all of that. And if they decide that at state level that they, this individual meets all the criteria, they will send a letter to the city in which this person wants to open up a retail business. And they will say, hey, what is your zoning code allow? And if our zoning code is very specific and says retail, um, dispensaries are only allowed in the specific block of the specific zone, then, um, the state takes that back and says, okay, yep, this fits the bill. This is where they want to locate their business and the state will grant them a license. If the zoning code is not specific enough and they say, well, I want to open one just in a commercial district within the city, unless we have a zoning ordinance on the book that limits it from being in certain locations or allows it in certain locations. The, um, the state may grant the license anyway. So this is our, the city, the city has the opportunity to, um, to determine the location of where those dispensaries are allowed. Uh, the second ordinance that I can see city council considering will be a public use ordinance. So the state law has language, um, around where you can, cannot use cannabis, um, and CBD products, starting August first. Um, but from a, a local regulatory standpoint, it's being advised that cities establish an ordinance that would, um, look at public use. um look at public use in parks, sidewalks, right away. And so um Chief Tiki, uh and I've had a few conversations around that. So we will, this fall, plan to bring um some discussions at a council level about what councils' calls are around this. And ultimately draft an ordinance for council to consider. And eager to see what the county has to say next week. Um police chief hiring process, uh we posted the position a week ago for police chief. Uh we've begun receiving applications. Um that position will be open for another two weeks. Following that two-week uh the full three-week posting period, uh we'll follow our normal application and interview process. I anticipate a interview process that is at least two rounds. And so I'll provide another update to council on at the August fourteenth meeting. And finally, I'd like to welcome Sam Catalin to the water wastewater department. Sam um is originally from the sort of sort county area and tried the water wastewater department last week as a water wastewater operator um to replace the departing Nathan Heibler. And I want to wish Nathan well. His last day was last week and he's um, he's looking to do something. So I'm very happy for him. So we see Sam out and about, uh please welcome him to the department. He's gonna be a great thing.
Very good. Any questions? Any questions for the city? If not, we'll move into the regular agendas. And the first thing on the regular agenda, of course, is ordinance five ninety-eight, second, final reading.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So a lot of this has been discussed already with the public here tonight. Um but procedures suggest that following the first reading and a public hearing, that the city council would consider a second and final hearing of the proposed ordinance. The uh, at the July tenth meeting, city council did waive the first reading, but before waiving it, uh city council voted to amend some of the language, one of which was to remove the exemption for brick and mortar existing businesses that have a brick and mortar facility within the city of La Sore. And also the addition of language exempting mobile food units participating in city sponsored community events from restrictions on connections to municipal electric service. Um for example, right now, we, um there's no set restriction for um events that participate in Giant Days from connecting to the panel of Legion Park. Um so council removed that language as well. And we'll take any other questions, more concerns at this point and um await council action.
I, I would like to, they brought, I thought, some great points. Why is four A seven on there? Why is it that the city of La Sore has to be named? These people are insured for a million bucks. Why does the city of La Sore have to have their name?
If the intent is to operate and operate property, and that's consistent with any event that we have. So if we have a carnival in town, they're required to show the city as secondary insured because it's our, it's public property. If they're operating a private property, that would not be the case. There would not be a requirement.
So Henderson, Bell Plain, Jordan, Saint Peter, they all have this? No, no, I didn't think so.
Well, City here doesn't have an ordinance on the books right now.
Currently.
Currently. I know they're looking at it.
Well, I mean, I can speak to Jordan, Carver, and Mankato. They all have the same exact language. I pulled it, I pulled all their ordinances in the last two weeks. They're all identical to this.
And you found them?
Yeah.
I tried, I couldn't find them.
They're, they're sorted differently, but if you read through them, they're word for word policies, they're identical.
Okay.
Now, whether they enforce them.
Well, that's why it brought the enforcement question because all of this.
Saint, Saint Peter, I couldn't find one. Bell Plain, I found the application, which is different from their, than their ordinance, just like would be here. I couldn't find their ordinance. Henderson, I did not find anyone.
Right, I couldn't either. I couldn't either. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Peter? Anybody?
I, I guess, do we have the ability to answer any of the questions aside from that, that Mr. Shepherd asked tonight? Are we gonna continue to, I agree with what they're saying, wholeheartedly, like I continue, I want to see police or continue to grow with what we've offered. I think Pete, John have done great things for our community and provided a great service to our community that we strive for, right? We opened Main Street with the whole of having a festival street. That was the drive behind that. I don't want something like this hindering us moving forward. I understand and I, and I think they won't understand that there's a need for an ordinance. But I also don't want to hinder allowing people to come to go to our community and run festivals. And that's my concern and I, and I do, I go back to my thought process again, why are we pushing this now? Is this something we can push down the road and look at more long-term rather than trying to cram it in two weeks? And the first, we as a council heard about this was two weeks ago when we got the agenda. I guess I have concerns with pushing this, continuing to push this forward. And I, I would rather push it down and have further conversation about what this looks like long-term. Because it is, I do feel like it's gonna affect our community in the long term. And I, and I understand I'm on board with, we need a policy to make sure that we aren't getting a bad apple in our community selling products that they shouldn't be or affecting some of our other businesses. I don't, from what I've heard, none of the concerns say differently from even the people that are here speaking to us tonight. They're, they're on board with the policy. But I feel like we're hindering what we have. And that's my concern.
Can we, Mr. Swanberg, go ahead.
Um yeah, I, I appreciate when community members who are directly involved in a situation like this bring these issues forward to us. They know, we don't, um but we want to be informed. The city, the cities that don't have this type of, that don't have an ordinance, don't have a policy, in my opinion, are only asking for trouble. And it's somewhere down the road, they're gonna get it.
And, and I don't.
We're small-town friendly and I want to protect the people in our community as well as the folks who are coming into our community. I think the background check on all employees and the mobile unit is, is a, is a reach. But um I don't know how in the world they could get that done in a timely manner. Um and I'm not a fan of having policies if you can't enforce them. I think that's on the, the food truck owner themselves. They need to do background checks on their employees and they know who they're hiring and who's questionable and who isn't. I trust them. Um as far as operating their food trucks within a brick and mortar business, I, I would like to change that to without their permission. Um if Pete wants to have food trucks within a thousand feet of his business, I got no problem with that. But if it's a problem for him or any other business owner, I would like to give them that opportunity. They might be the ones, especially in Pete's case, who are inviting them there. Uh so I don't want to preclude them for having those types of activities. That would be good. Um to me, that would be a good thing to add to the policy, you know, without their permission, they can operate them.
And that's, and that's where I come from. That's where I ask if we can push this on the road. Because I, we're already halfway into the season where food trucks operate. Am I wrong, John?
No.
Why are we so adamant about putting this on the books today rather than, say, November or December? Why is it such a rush to push it now?
Yeah, I don't know if it is. I think it just came up and it's the proper procedures that need to follow through.
And I understand that. So I just, I wonder if we can push this and have some further conversations and and look at some of these questions that were brought up and take a deeper dive into this rather than cramming it over a two-week time period.
And I think too, go ahead, on the background checks, you guys corrected my wrong. The background check a violation only for the business that the individual is in. I mean, he could be a convicted felon. But if he got a checkmark or a bad thing from the, the state health department, that could be grounds for denying. Not the fact that he's a felon. So it was just has to do with the food business, nothing else. That's how I understood it to be. So the people that work there know that they're covered by this at all. It's the establishment, it's the owner that runs it.
You're right, but it is worth covering, but I'm in employees. Yeah, and that's, that's where I.
Yeah, I, I don't get that because the employees, it's the business that the background check is checking. Not the individuals.
That's what it should be, in my opinion.
Right.
You're checking on the business, not the employees.
Correct.
I also had a question about the electrical cords and hookups. Uh I guess I'm not clear on who can use them and when they can and when they can't and why, why we would allow someone, if it isn't a town festival, to just hook up to city electricity. That, that doesn't make sense to me either, without a fee.
Well, council members, we have one of four choices tonight. One would be to waive the second reading or read the second reading tonight. Yeah, if you look on the back, we can uh inform there's no action, second uh reading, we'll not conduct the city. Should advise the staff on the next steps. Tonight, final uh reading, and we would conduct the city, should advise the staff on what to do next. Yeah, there's the modus, modification and recommendations on what we have to do with the language. So I think, I think what I'm hearing tonight is, is that uh we move, uh move ahead as far as looking at the language a little closer, if we may. I know what kind of uh motion I'm looking for tonight, but Joel, you wanna give us some feedback on, is this something we can talk about at a workshop? And then we rewrite the uh, make some modifications to the uh the rules and then do another reading later down the year.
Um I would say it is something that can be done in a work session, although I would hesitate to workshop in the language of the ordinance, just because it would be really time-consuming for council. I think there's enough feedback here that if the direction from council is.
Thank you. That's kind of what I wanted to hear.
To work on it, then. Staff could take this back and work language or bring it back to council.
That's exactly what I'd like to hear. Yeah, so you want a motion to deny the second and final reading of it? Or do you want a motion to, to?
Not to do anything, but if it's a, but if it's a new, if we change the ordinance, none of us have a new reading, correct? So you wouldn't effectively deny the second reading, correct?
Yes.
That's the motion.
Or there could be a motion to conduct the reading and it could be.
Although I'd take a motion to deny the second reading.
Second. Thank you, council member Sullivan, uh seconded by council member Tui.
Might be some discussion here.
Go ahead, anybody, or Mr. Peter, go ahead.
If you deny it, does that deny this ordinance completely? Do we bring it back?
What I would ask is that um
Great question.
The, the second reading of this with its existing language would be denied. But um what I'm sensing, and I, so I don't think I need to vote on this. But I would be comfortable working language based on the feedback tonight and bringing back those language to council and sharing that with council before um before it would come to a first reading and then have the city council conduct a new first reading with revised ordinance.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make from that because I feel we need the ordinance, but I also feel we need some work to change it.
We have a motion by the council member Sullivan to the night, the second reading, we will uh, we will not conduct that tonight. The city will advise the staff on the next steps. Anybody want to second that motion?
You got it.
Was it what? I'm sorry, thank you. Seconded by a council member to me. Any other discussion, comments, or concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Uh.
And let me impose, the eyes have it. Thank you. Moving on to um item.
Do you have any comments?
Um while we're past that, but Mr. Peter, step up. If you make it real quick, that'll be fine.
I guess I would like to suggest that part of that process is bringing somebody like Johnny to hear that working knowledge of, and that's his livelihood, to have him help out, to understand, you know, give some input into the licensing process. So, you know, we want, we want something that makes sense, basically, is what we want. And, you know, by having somebody that's in the business making a livelihood on it, give them some good input. The other thing that we were just talking about is, you know, with that distance of down on Main Street, we would probably do away with the, with Farmer's Market. Because we're, we for what? Luke's goes over there and sells stuff there. And it's within that radius that we probably couldn't do that. So please take that all into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. We will indeed take that into consideration. We appreciate your time. Moving on to uh, I didn't beat Bee, Giant Days two thousand twenty-three city support request, Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um Giant Days Committee has requested in-kind sponsorship of the Giant Days event for twenty twenty-three. Uh city has historically provided ID-type support for the event in the way of um staff support, vehicles, equipment, picnic tables. Use of electricity, Legion Park, all these things. And um uh so city staff met um a week and a half ago with the Giant Days Committee uh to understand what the plans were for the event. And Chief Tiki, Public Service Director, the chair, uh our lead public works operator, Shane Meyer and I um are tracking all the requests and which are outlined in the memo, um nothing that is materially different from last year. And um the recommendation tonight is a motion to approve the request for the in-kind sponsorship of Giant Days as outlined in the package. So moved.
Second. Wow, that was quick. No discussion, no questions. So council member Swanberg uh gave the motion, council member Tui seconded that. Any comments, concerns?
Joel, how was the timeline this year with Giant Days committee?
We were cutting pretty close.
So is that some feedback we can get back to them? I mean, this is a conversation we want to continue to have, but we'd like more participation, what?
Um, yes, and that, that's feedback that has been provided. Um and last year, the attempt after last year was to re-break this, like, Giant Days Committee meeting in January.
I guess, I guess I was asking more to the committee, specifically from a council standpoint.
Yes, like, yeah, I think what, what ultimately benefits us this year is that there's not a material change in the outline of the weekend. But if there were, um, you know, I know the, the Briscoe concert in particular, Saturday night, um if there were more questions about that than anything, just given the sheer volume of people, that if the weather's right, um we might anticipate at Legion Park that night, which would be unusual for you for Giant Days. Um that we would, I think, do well as a community to have earlier conversations of it.
And that's what I was getting at. I don't think any one of us on the council wants to not support celebration. But a partnership would be nice, a longstanding communication partnership would be nice.
Yep, and there, and I've had, um I'd say several informal conversations with members of the Giant Days Committee over the last six months. Um and we finally were able to sit down uh two weeks ago to discuss the details of it. But I think the earlier definitely.
Thank you. We had a discussion. We had a motion made by council member Swanberg, seconded by council member Tui to approve the request in kind of sponsorship of Giant Days two twenty twenty-three as outlined. All those in favor? If anybody opposed, the eyes have it. Thank you. Moving on, the I am EC, Assistant Local Lead Inspector requirement. This is Roby. Before you get into that, can you please share the hierarchy of this important job? Yes, and who's in charge first?
Yes, so we're, so the not just we, the mayor is, is designated upon, you know, as the local lead inspector for the municipality. Mayor Kirby, um earlier this year, uh decided to delegate that duty to public works manager Scott Schrader. Um Scott Schrader has left us and in the way that the appointment of Mr. Schrader was made earlier this year, it left a little bit of uncertainty. So just to be crystal clear, um staff would like council to designate that the public works manager, whomever that happens to be, be the assistant local lead inspector um taking on the duties from the mayor and then appointing the public services director as the secondary. And actually, this has some, um so we've had some recent activity around this. We had some, received a letter from La Sore. We had some, received a letter from La Sore counties weed inspector regarding some reports of wild persnick, which is considered a nonchalant weed in Tyrone Township. And EDA, of course, owns a whole lot of land out in Tyrone Town, or adjacent to Tyrone Township, I should say. So received a letter asking us to keep an eye on foreign, so public works manager Scott Trader to drive out there. There isn't any on the EDA land right now, but we do have a mitigation plan in place should any wild persnick bring in, or just weed be identified as public property. So the recommendation tonight is to appoint the public works manager generically in that role as the assistant local weed inspector in the city.
So Major Claire, you'd be the assistant.
Should the mayor choose to, choose to act upon those duties, granted you by Minnesota state law, you may.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to appoint city public works manager as primary assistant local weed inspector and the city's public service director as second assistant local weed inspector? Move. Second. Thank you, Councilmember Tumi, Councilmember Slumber. Seconded that. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it.
Aye.
One opposed. One opposed, and that was Councilmember Huntington. I'm sorry to disappoint you, but we will have an assistant. Moving on to item eight B.
I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So the city has for many years belonged to the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association, MMUA. MMUA provides whole new services to municipal utilities. And for everything, training, education, safety programming, they do a lot lobbying at the capital, euphemistic, euphemistically called legislative advocacy. And MMUA does occasionally have business meetings where they look to municipalities to vote on items, priorities, things like that. And so the city council can appoint members of either themselves, it could be city council members, or they could be city staff to be delegates to MMUA for voting items. Currently, electric manager Justin Anderson serves as the only MMUA delegate from the city. And on discussion with Public Services Director, Chery, he recommended that Foster Transberg, who currently serves as the water wastewater manager and the city safety coordinator, be named the primary delegate to MMUA, and that Justin Anderson and Mr. Chery himself serve as alternate delegates.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, any motion to appoint Foster Transberg as a primary MMUA delegate and appoint Justin Anderson, and which gets yours are alternate MMUA delegates.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Slumber. Seconded. Seconded by Councilmember Huntington. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to agenda item eight B, the Saff Farms twenty twenty-three request. Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For several years, Saff Farms has operated a sweet corn stand in the parking lot, city-owned, globally known as the Pizza Ranch Parking Lot, which is, most of which is city-owned, near the corner of Bridge and Second Street. And Saff Farms has formally requested that city council grant the use of that space again, understanding full while the timing of this is a little bit backwards, because Saff Farms is already out there right now, probably selling sweetheart. But this request came up Tuesday, council meeting last year, and it's been a little bit inconsistent Wednesday, Wednesday council, so I did speak with Mitch Saffs and told him that I would be formally bringing this to city council to ask permission to use that, that space for the twenty twenty-three sweet corn season.
Sorry, very good. Motion by Councilmember Sullivan, seconded by Councilmember Williams. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it.
Yes, well. Councilmembers, Slumber answered, this has to be annual. It, it, it doesn't, it just strictly has that when we have a request like this for Giant Days or Christmas in the Valley, or the Lions, Christmas, who says.
It can consist.
Council has them. Yeah.
Great question. Thank you. Moving on to reports and items of appreciation, Councilmember, this is your opportunity. What's going on in the community? What's going on with your commissions? As always, we'll start with Councilmember Huntington. I'd be enough. Thank you, Councilmember Schrader.
I attended the planning commission meeting. Chris Roder, the new commissioner, was sworn in. We had two public hearings scheduled. The first one was for a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone of eight eleven South Fourth and four four Carol Street. The commission recommended to the council that the comprehensive plan be updated and parcels rezoned. The second public hearing was postponed for a future date. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
We had a transit meeting, I was unable to attend. Let's hope to that over to Mr. Tumi. Tonight, we did have a EDA meeting. We are in the face of passing a purchase agreement, or not a purchase agreement, once, at the EDA land with Mr. Brad's ass. He was the gentleman that was trying to build a car track in people.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Moving on to Councilmember Slumber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank all the volunteers who helped with running Legion baseball tournament here the past two weekends. Folks in the concession stands, field maintenance, ticket sellers, press box. Very well run and very well received by the visiting teams, and it was a very successful event.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Tumi.
Yes, I did attend the MRBT meeting. It was on the eleventh. And it was essentially going over the annual audit of the organization, and it passed with flying colors.
Thank you, Eric Gochey. Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Williams.
Had a HR, HRA meeting last week and close to having only one or two vacancies, so almost filling up that inside card, which is good news. Did you receive the letter from HUD about their compliance review? And there's eleven findings to redeveloping appliance work.
Thank you. Mayor Kirby, as far as my comments, next week, of course, all of you know, we have our city celebration or council celebration somewhat of a home coming from a lot of families. So I want to wish everybody well next week, everybody have a good time. And along the maridonis as far as weeds, I know it's been a dry year. If you've got a ballpark with some weeds, we've got a great public company by you. I really appreciate it. The city appreciates it if you cut some of those weeds down. And I just kind of keep things steady for next week. We really appreciate it. With that, I, I will accept any motion to adjourn this meeting. So moved. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. All those in favor?